Good evening and welcome to the Village of Tocco, Zoning Board of Appeals for May 9th, 2018. If we could all stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Nancy, if we could take a roll?
Member Fiori.
Present.
Member Palladino.
Present.
Chairman Jeff.
Present.
Mr. Chair, I just want to let the applicants know, as you can see, there's only three members up there, so if there's any action taken tonight, it has to be unanimous, so you do have the right to adjourn if you'd like. It really goes to 150. Those are the only applications that there could be a vote on tonight, but the other applicants, I think, are just going to present, and we'll hear from the public on them.
Okay, can we do the approval of the minutes? How do I do that exactly? You've got to run me through some of this. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, first on the docket here is 150 Main Street, the Fitness Center. If we could have the applicant please come up, state your name.
Hi, my name is Jake Lewis. Mike Lewis.
All right, gentlemen, if you could just run us through any changes from the application and the discussion we had last month.
Yes, so we consulted with our landlord, and our landlord decided to grant us three additional spaces in the parking garage across the street at 160 Main Street.
And those are exclusively for employees, correct?
Yes, for employees only.
Okay, just so everyone in the public knows, out of their own pocket, the applicant paid for a traffic study to be done regarding the impact of their business on that area. The conclusion of the study, which is available through the Village, is that there was no impact and no necessary parking beyond the 10 spaces that they had been allotted in the lot behind the location. Of their own volition, then they went out and got the three additional spots for their employees to park in order to keep them off the streets, and we appreciate that very much. Do any of the other members have a comment? Questions?
No.
None? Does anyone have a resolution?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair, I think the public hearing's still open on this, so you may want to ask if there's someone from the public that would like to speak on this.
Thank you, guys, I think we're all set. All right, so the public hearing is still open. Would anyone like to come say a few words? Seeing none, I'd like to close the public hearing.
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now here. Does anyone have a motion in the form of a resolution for 150 Main Street?
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion in form of a resolution for 150 Main Street. Okay, Village of Tocco's Zoning Board of Appeals, Special Permit Resolution. The applicant for a special permit is requested by Red Wing 3637 LLC, whose address is 150 Main Street, Tocco, New York, Section 29, Block 9, Lot 1. The applicant is seeking to open an Orange Theory Sports Club at 150 Main Street, Tocco, which is located in the Business District. Pursuant to 4-6 dot 1 of the Village of Tocco zoning code, in the Business District, a sports and health club is permitted, are permitted use, uses under a special permit. Thus, a special permit is required in this, and this instant application is made before this board. Seeker resolution. Based on this application as submitted, this Zoning Board of Appeals finds and determines that, one, the action taken herein is an unlisted action, subject to the requirements of SECRE and its implementing regulations. Two, this Zoning Board of Appeals is in possession of all information reasonably necessary to make the determination as to the environmental significance of the proposed area variance application. Three, that the action taken herein shall not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, and it is declared that a negative declaration is hereby adopted with regard to this action.
Have a vote on it?
Do we have a vote in it? Can I get a second?
Second.
And a vote?
Member Fiori.
In favor.
Member Palladino.
In favor.
Chairman Jeff.
In favor.
Okay, applicant, Red Wing 3637 LLC, is seeking to open an Orange Theory Sports Facility at 150 Main Street, and is seeking a special permit from this board, as one is required for a sports club in the Business District. The location at 150 Main Street where the sports facility is proposed is an existing building, and there is currently two vacant retail spaces located at the premises. The applicant is seeking to occupy both retail spaces. The standards of a special permit in the Business District are located in 6-2 of the Village of Tocco zoning code. The standards and our analysis of same are as follows. One, compatibility with district, that the location and size of the use, the nature and intensity of the operations involved in or conducted in connection with such use, the size of the site in relation to the use, the assembly of persons in connection with the use, and the location of the site with respect to street giving, streets giving access to the site are such that the use will be in harmony with the appropriate and orderly development of the district in which the use is proposed to be located. It should be noted here that Orange Theory is a class-based sports facility, based on Orange Theory being a class-based club and not your typical gym. We believe that the nature and intensity of the use is compatible with the surrounding area. Classes are limited in size to maximum size of 39. Two, compatibility with comprehensive plan, that the proposed use will be compatible with the goals and objectives, end objectives of the comprehensive plan. The use of a sports club in the Business District is compatible with the comprehensive plan, as the comprehensive plan seeks to revitalize the Main Street corridor. This is consistent with Village Boards permitting sports clubs within the Business District. Three, services that all proposed structures, equipment, or material will be readily accessible for fire and police protection. The location is pre-existing building. The building is several years old, and this will be the first tenant located in this space. This board, in its prior approval for the building, reviewed the accessibility for fire and police protection, and found the premises to be adequate. We reiterate and confirm our prior approval as to this condition. Four, adjacent properties, that the location, nature, and height of buildings, the location, nature, and height of walls and fences, and the nature and extent of landscaping on the site, shall not hinder or discourage the appropriate development and use of adjacent land and buildings. As stated previously in the applicant, as stated previously, the applicant is seeking to occupy an existing building. Therefore, this condition was met in the prior approvals for the existing building. Five, nuisance, that operations in connection with the use will not be offensive, dangerous, or destructive of basic environmental characteristics, or detrimental to the public interest of the Village, and not be more objectionable to nearby properties by reason of noise, fumes, vibration, flashing of, or glare from lights, and similar nuisance conditions that would be the operation of any permitted use not requiring a special permit. The applicant is seeking to occupy an existing building. We have reviewed the applicant's noise dampening measures, and we find them to be state-of-the-art and more than adequate for the space. Regardless, the applicant must comply with the noise ordinance of the Village at all times. Six, neighborhood character and property values. The neighborhood character and surrounding property value, values shall be reasonably safeguarded. The location was built as a retail space, and we believe that a sports club will be compatible with the neighborhood, and will enhance the surrounding neighborhood, and property values will be safeguarded. Seven, traffic, that the use will not cause undue traffic congestion or create a traffic hazard. The applicant is going to operate an Orange Theory franchise, which, as stated previously, is a class-based facility. As this is a class-based facility, we find that a minimum of 15 minutes between classes would be adequate to allow one class to end and vacate, and another class to commence. With a mandatory gap in time between classes, this will ensure that there will be no undue taxing on the traffic in the area. Eight, parking, that parking areas will be of adequate size for the particular use. Property located and suitably screened from adjoining residential uses, and the entrance and exit drives shall be laid out so as to achieve maximum safety. The applicant has proposed 20 off-street parking spaces to be used by the patrons of this facility. 10 of the 20 spaces will be dedicated solely to the applicant. Of the remaining 10 spaces, one is handicapped, and nine shall be shared with residents as a first-come, first-served basis. In addition to the off-street parking, for the patron, the applicant has secured three additional off-street parking spaces located in the parking, at the parking garage across the street from the premises to be used by the applicant's employees. The board has requested BFJ Planning to review the parking, and BFJ Planning has found the parking to be adequate. We have also received a recommendation from the Village of Tocco's Planning Board, who recommends that the parking is adequate. We hereby attach to this resolution and incorporate the recommendation to this approval. We agree with the Planning Board and the Village's planners that the proposed parking is adequate. Nine, that the use conforms in all respects to all the regulations of this appendix, and particularly to the specific supplemental regulation that, that apply to such use. We find that the use conforms in all respects to requirements of a special permit, and note that there are no supplemental regulations that apply to a sports club. Based on the above, the applicant for a special permit is hereby approved with the following conditions. One, at all times, there shall be 10 dedicated off-street spots for the applicant. Said spaces shall be designated as Orange Theory Parking only. At all times, the applicant shall have access and use to the 10 remaining off-street spaces located at the premises on the first-come, first-served basis. Two, the applicant shall comply with the Village noise, Village's noise ordinance. Three, that there shall be three dedicated spaces for the employees of the applicant located at the parking garage across the street from the applicant's site. Four, there shall be a minimum of 15 minutes between classes.
If I could have a second?
Second.
Nancy, if you could take the roll?
Yes. Member Fiori.
In favor.
Member Palladino.
In favor.
Chairman Jeff.
In favor. All right, congratulations. Good luck, guys.
Good luck, guys. You've got to sign this. Still.
All right, all set? All right. Moving on to the next item on our agenda is 100 Main Street. If the applicant could come up to the mic.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. My name is Les Maron, Maron Amazanti. For the applicant, MC Equities LLC. There is Jim Murray, who is representative of MC Equities, is here this evening. Should there be any questions that you or Mr. Gerson have that I am not able to answer, Mr. Murray can help me out with it. This is an application to modify and reduce the prior variances, as well as to modify the special permit that was granted for this project, which is at 100 Main Street in Tocco. The application that was filed in March of 2018 this year sought to change all of the previously approved ground floor retail space to residential. After meeting with this board at your work session at the last meeting, and getting some insight and suggestions from your board, we went back to the drawing boards and modified and revised that application. I'll get into some of the details, I'll describe it a little later. The application, the approvals were originally granted in, on June 10th of 2015. Certain area advances, area variances, and a special permit were approved to build a new building at 100 Main Street. Since that approval, the owner has relocated its offices next door on Main Street to 88A Main Street, to help better serve the project and the community. The building was planned and approved to contain retail space on the ground floor, or first floor, and 19 dwelling units on the second through the fourth floors. Construction is well underway and is expected to be completed this fall. The special permit provided by, our original application asked for certain changes in the application. We had requested that the, at this time, we're requesting that the ground floor space be reduced to the commercial space, or business space be reduced to a mere 800 square feet, or not more than 800 square feet. What originally had been approved was 2,642 square feet. We're also proposing to put in storage, 19 storage units, in other words, every unit in the building will have storage, a new garbage and storage room to better expand the maintenance of storage, as well as recycling, and, as well as a janitor's closet. With respect to the change in the area variances, I'd like to quickly run through the standards. Whether an undesirable change will be created, or a detriment to the nearby properties will be created by granting the variance. We submit that the changes as proposed will not affect the streetscape or sightlines. It's frankly not changing anything on the outside of the building. The only visible difference, and this already mostly completed building, will be, there will be no signs installed along the facade of the building as presently planned, so there won't be any storefronts there. It is an attractively designed building. It has actually improved the physical environmental conditions in the area, and has filled a gap in the Main Street's, streetscape. The new building blends in well, and in fact appears to be smaller than the adjoining building to the west along Main Street, which looks like, the adjoining building looks like it's a story higher, because it comes closer to the street at the top. The reduction in the business use on the first floor should result in less traffic and congestion on Main Street. We've been informed that this proposed reduction in business use has the support of local businesses in the area, and also local property owners. Whether the business, whether the benefit can be sought, can be achieved by some other method feasible other than an area variance. Business and storage uses are permitted uses on the first floor in the BR zoning district. So this change to be only business, to include storage, is frankly a permitted use right now, and does not require a variance. However, it's going to be accompanied by a reduction in parking that we have, which we'll, I'll get into in a minute. This change cannot be achieved by any other feasible method, other than this area variance, which in this case is actually reducing a previously approved variance. Whether the requested variance is substantial. The original 19 residential units and 2,642 square feet of space required 52 parking spaces. This board had granted a variance of reducing 15 spaces to 37, which meant there was a 29% variance. This revised application has the same 19 residential units, but only 800 square feet of, of business use. That makes the requirement only 42 spaces, which is 10 less than had been originally anticipated. We still intend to keep the 37 parking spaces as they were previously laid out and approved by this board. But at this point, we only need a five, a five-space variance, which is a mere 12%. This revised variance is certainly not substantial, and is far less than the prior approval. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical environmental conditions of the area, while the rear of the building board is on a residential zone, the front of the building is on a heavily traveled commercial road with various types of businesses on it, including several purely residential businesses and several mixed-use buildings. The changes to this building, as proposed, will not affect the streetscape and sightlines, and certainly should reduce traffic by having less businesses on the street there. The building blends in well, and appears lower and smaller than the building to the west of it, as I mentioned before. To our knowledge, there have been no problems or issues during constructing affecting the neighborhood. The, the views of the building from all sides are very attractive. The building is well-finished in the back, and completely finished, it's not just a blank wall there. There are architectural details to help the folks who live behind it, who have a view of this building. The next is whether the self-create, whether the difficulty was self-created. This, you know, it's our position that it was not self-created. The original approvals and variances were favored by the Village Code and the Village planners. The current development density, economic and market conditions, however, have changed to remove the viability of the previously approved project, and that's why we're seeking this change. Along with the change, along with the, reducing the variance, we also need some, the, we need to change the special permit, and there's a special permit because of the residential uses above it. I'm not going to run through all the conditions which were met at the 2015 approval, because none of that has changed, quite frankly. What has changed is some of the, the items that relate to reducing this particular use of the space. Additionally, the original, so we're seeking that the original permit be, sorry, the original special permit approval and variance be amended so that all references to the 2,642 square feet be changed to read not more than 800 square feet, which is the current proposal. We also, in order to be consistent, in the previous resolution, there were a number of places where the space on the first floor is referred to as commercial retail, or commercial slash retail, and we'd like to just be referred to as business, in conformance with the business residential zone. As for the, there were a number of conditions. Some of the conditions were not asking for any changes to, the first condition had to do with the number of residential units. We're not asking that that be changed. The next condition had to do with the square footage. Obviously, we're asking for that to be changed to the 800, and to be listed as business use, not commercial retail. The next condition had to do with stormwater control. We're not asking that that be changed. We can still comply with that and intend to. The floor area ratio is not being changed, which is condition number four. Condition five talks about, again, it talks about the 2,642 square feet and two retail spaces. We'd like that language to be changed to not more than 800 square feet and one business The condition number six in the previous approval had referred to four-bedroom units. At that time, there were three units on the top floor. That floor, those were supposed to be four-bedroom units. They have since been changed to three-bedroom units, so this particular condition can be changed to indicate eight three-bedroom units, instead of six three-bedroom units, as had been said before.
Just, just to clarify, the people at home, there's essentially no additional apartments are being added. Essentially, we're cutting down one bedroom from each of those fourth-floor apartments, you know, those four-bedroom apartments.
Correct. And then the next condition said there wouldn't be more than 41 bedrooms on the, so not exceed 41 bedrooms. We don't have to change that, because they're currently reducing it to 39 bedrooms, but it still complies with that condition of being not more than 41 bedrooms.
Okay.
The eighth condition is on the parking. Originally, the parking provided for having reserved, not having reserved space, because there was a lot of shared parking because of the, the large variance that had been granted. We're proposing to change that to having at least, we, at this board's suggestion, suggestion, we're going to propose that it say at least two parking spaces shall be designated or assigned for each apartment of two or more bedrooms. So for the two and three bedrooms, they will each have two spaces. All the other 37 spots will be designated and assigned, except that the two handicap spots won't be assigned, because they're for use of handicapped folks, or people have the permits. The business unit, we're going to assign at least two spaces, but not more than four spaces, and those parking spaces can be shared with visitors, so we'll be able to have some visitor parking. So they'll either, either during the day, if the spaces aren't being used for the small business use, they will be there, or at night, when the business is not there, or on weekends, those spaces will be available for visitors, so it'll take some pressure off the, the streets in the area. There's a condition about, there was previously a condition about stickers or hand tags, which we're, we don't have, which would basically show residents or merchants. We're requesting that that condition be removed, because it's no longer necessary, because they'll be, will be assigning spaces. The spaces will get assigned with the units at the, when the folks close on the units, which are being sold as condominiums.
Is there any concern from your, the people who are going to be using the commercial space, that there might be, you know, visitors for the, the people who are living in the building might be parking in their spaces, if they don't know any better, or those?
We haven't, we haven't decided at this time, but at, at the present time, the office space that's there is going to be used for the management, for the building, and for the, the company that is building the building, as their offices.
Okay.
For now. They may rent it in the future, if they find that the management office on the site isn't required for this building, or that they don't require it. And they will probably, they haven't quite finished the designations, but they'll probably put up a sign to the effect of office hours or certain hours.
Okay.
Reserve for business, visitors allowed at all other times, or something to that effect, to make it clear to folks that they can use those spaces.
Thank you.
And there may be other spaces that are clearly just marked visitors. We haven't really finalized that part of the, of the, the design yet.
Excuse me.
Yes.
So each, how should I say, according to the size of the apartment, they will have designated parking spaces, and those will have, say, apartment 3A, and that's a, that's a two or three-bedroom apartment, that will have 3A, they will have two parking spaces marked for 3A and such.
I don't, they may not be marked with the apartment, but the spaces will be numbered.
Not yet, but they will specifically be designated to that, to that apartment.
Space 14 and 15, or however they get numbered, will be specifically assigned, and they'll be deeded with those particular units, this way the folks know that they have the spaces, the villagers knows that the spaces are, have to be used by those people. And people, they can't rent out the spaces to people, they can only use them.
Thank you.
The next condition, condition number 10, covered no use of the business space for restaurants, food uses, et cetera, theaters and cabarets. We don't intend that that be, we're not asking that that be changed. That was a condition that this board originally asked for, and I believe it's also in the BR code, but we just needed to change commercial to business, and change the square footage on that. The next, number 11, originally said that the, that the units and dimensions couldn't deviate from the plan. The units have since been, and obviously without coming back to this board, it's one of the reasons we're back at this board, so we'd like that condition to, to indicate that the fourth-floor units can be not more than two three-bedroom units, or not more than one one-bedroom unit, and that one-bedroom unit also does have a den, as is indicated earlier in one of the other sections. And the last condition had to do with commencement of construction, which we obviously have no issue with changing, or no reason to change that. I would respectfully submit that the applicant has met all the standards for changing the, to diminishing the, the use variances. I respectfully submit that the conditions in the area have not changed, or the building to make any change, other changes in the special permit, and I would respectfully request that this board approve this application in all respects. Thank you. If you have any questions, obviously, we're here.
Do you guys have any questions for Les?
No.
I would like to just note, based on some input in our work session, just, we do have some concern regarding the treatment of the windows entering onto the storage space, and I would encourage the Planning Board to work with the applicant in order to come up with solutions that our residents aren't looking at on people's possessions as they walk by, but we've talked about that.
All right, well, there will, Chairman, there will be, the storage rooms actually do have doors, so they won't be looking at possessions, they won't be able to keep them out. However, the applicant hasn't finalized their plans yet, but they will be presenting a couple of options to the Building Department, the Building Department can share with the Planning Board Chairman and the Planning Board, and certainly they'll take your concerns into consideration.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No other questions?
No questions.
All right, the public hearing is still open. If anyone from the public would like to come up and comment on 100 Main Street. Seeing nobody had moved to close the public hearing, if I could have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have a motion in the form of a resolution?
Yes, I have a motion in form of a resolution. The applicant, MC Equities LLC, thereafter MCE, is the record owner of the premises, commonly known as 100 Main Street, Tocco, New York, and known on the tax map of the Village of Tocco, Section 28, Block 5, Lot 3, 5 and 7. On or about June 10th, 2015, this, this board granted the applicant various, various area variances and special permit to construct a new building at 100 Main Street, Tocco. The premises are known substantially completed, complete, and the applicant is now seeking to modify it and reduce the variances granted, and to modify it. to modify it and reduce the variances granted and to modify its special permit based on the market conditions of the area, attached hereto and incorporated herein as is, is the June 10, 2015 approval of this board. Due to difficulties of the applicant in finding a tenant for the retail space and the demands of potential new owners for assigned parking, he has necessitated the applicant to file a revised application. The proposal is now to modify the ground floor unit, the ground floor to provide for 800 square feet of business space, a room for storage units and for residents of the building, a chalice closet and enlarged garbage storage. The applicant is seeking to amend the prior approval for changing the approved 22,642 square foot of commercial retail to 800 square foot of business space and amend their approved conditions as follows. Conditions. One, no change. Number two, delete and replace with, in no event shall the business, business space of the ground floor of the project exceed 800 square feet. In event the applicant seeks to increase the square footage of the business, based such increase shall require the further approval of the zoning board of appeals. Number three, no change. Number four, no change. Number five, delete and replace with, that the business space consists of not more than 800 square foot should now be used for more than one business space. Any division of the business space to more than one business shall, unit shall require the further approval of the zoning board. Number six, delete and replace with, the residential component of the project shall be limited to 19 residential units comprised of eight bedroom units, four two-bedroom units and seven one-bedroom units.
Eight three-bedroom units.
That's eight three-bedroom units.
Okay.
Four two-bedroom units and seven one-bedroom units, with one having a sturdy den. Including these totals of the fourth, is the fourth floor, which shall have no more than two bed, two three-bedroom units and one one-bedroom unit with a sturdy den. Any deviation from the total number of residential units that forth as 19 residential units shall require a further approval of the zoning board of appeals. Number seven, no change. Number eight, delete and replace with, at least one parking space shall be designated or assigned to each one-bedroom residential unit. At least two parking spaces shall be designated for all units larger than a one-bedroom. All 37 spaces shall be designated or assigned, except for the two handicap spaces. The business use, the business user may be assigned at least two, but not more than four. Parking spaces, which spaces may be shared with visitors. The remaining parking spaces shall be assigned to residential units or visitors.
Maybe assigned.
Okay. Oh, okay.
That's true.
Spaces may be assigned to residential units to, or visitors. Okay. Number nine, delete as not, delete as not applicable. Number 10, delete and replace with, the business component, component of the project consisting of more than 800 square feet of space shall not be used for restaurant, food-related uses, any business where food is served, soda prepared, theaters or cabarets. Number 11, delete and replace with, there shall be a total of two three-bedroom units and one one-bedroom unit located on the fourth floor. Number 12, no change. Okay. The requested amendments substantially reduce the parking variance provided previously granted by this board as a retail commercial space, which will now be business, has been slashed by more than two-thirds. We will find that the reduction of the net overall parking benefit of the project shall and surrounding areas. Since the parking variance is substantially reduced, we will find that assigned space, spaces to the units and business areas as proposed in the amended conditions will be appreciated. This is consistent with the village planner, BFJ, planning conclusion. Therefore, the request to amend the board's June 10, 2015 decision is granted in all respects. All findings and conclusions of the law previously determined by the board are reiterated and incorporated herein. Therefore, further, since the amended variances are now reduced and all findings of the conclusion as, as to this board, secret determine, determination in its June 10, 2010, June 10, 2015 approvals are reiterated and incorporated into this approval.
If I could have a second?
Second.
Nancy, if you take the roll?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
Thank you, gentlemen. We look forward to finishing your project.
Thank you.
So do we.
All right, thank you, everyone else. I'm sorry this has taken quite a bit of your time and it's getting late, so. All right, next up, we are going to have, let's see here, we're going to move on to 242 White Plains Road first, since we've had them in the work session. All right, you can go ahead and use the board here, sir, if you want. Okay. Or if you might, would mind telling us your name and address and let us know about your project.
Good evening, Chair, members of the board. I am Louis Campana, architect for the applicants, Maria and Matthew Campana. Maria and Matthew reside at subject property known as 242 White Plains Road, section 31, block 2, lot 7J, and located in the R5 zone. We're here before you this evening in pursuit of several area variances which are required to properly subdivide the lot in question. The subdivision will allow the applicants, who have resided at this location for over 30 years, to construct a new one-story, single-family dwelling as their primary residence situated on the new parcel. Circa 1985, 242 White Plains Road was party to a subdivision which preceded the 1999 zoning regulation amendment. The subject parcel is currently 20,517 square feet, larger than all other residential lots within a 400-foot radius. It is also important to keep in mind that for 30 years, this property has only been accessed from Taraway. We're proposing to subdivide this property into two lots. The existing dwelling will remain on the lot known as 6A and will be accessed exactly as it, as it does today. Lot 6A will be 13,024 square feet, exceeding the minimum requirement for lot area by roughly 3,000 square feet. This newly formed lot will also be large enough to support the FAR and coverage of the existing dwelling. We're seeking three variances for lot 6A. Section 4-2.3, lot width. Subject to the previous subdivision and formation of the cul-de-sac known as Taraway, the lot lines create a pie shape or bottleneck at the curb cut, reducing the lot width at this point to only 12 feet. We're proposing to preserve this condition and ask for relief of the current lot width regulation. Section 4-2.4.3, rear yard. As a result of the new subdivision line, the existing dwelling will be set off of the new rear property line by 25 feet, and therefore, we're seeking relief from the current 35-foot setback and a variance which would allow us to conform with the previous regulation at 25 feet. And finally, section 4-2.4.2, side yard. A product of the pre-1999 regulations, this legally non-conforming condition will remain unchanged. However, we must ask for relief from the current regulations to allow this legal non-conformity to persist as, as it is partial to a newly formed lot. The second parcel, known as lot 6B, will front White Plains Road and will be 7,943 square feet. Although it will not conform to the minimum lot area under today's regulations, my studies show that this lot is in fact larger than or comparable to 51% of all residential lots within the same zone and within a 400-foot radius. It is imperative to understand that most, if not all, lots in this area were developed prior to the 1999 zoning amendment and therefore conforming to the regulations of that time. It is not our intention to seek relief from the zoning regulations to construct something that will negatively impact the environment or create a condition that is conflicting with the surrounding neighborhood. But rather, we simply ask for relief from the current more restrictive regulations so that our development will be in harmony with the streetscape and immediate surrounding. We're asking for a total of four variances that will allow us to conform to the pre-1999 regulations and to produce a development that will coincide with the immediate environment. Section 4-2.3, lot area. As previously mentioned, lot 6B does not comply with the current minimum lot area regulation. We're seeking relief from this current regulation and ask to conform with the pre-1999 regulation, which would allow this site to fit in with most neighboring sites. Section 4-2.4.1, front yard. We're seeking relief of the current regulations and ask to conform with the pre-1999 regulations, a 25-foot setback instead of a 35-foot setback. Section 4-2.4.2, side yard. We're seeking relief from the current regulations and ask to conform with the pre-1999 regulations, a nine-foot setback instead of a 20-foot setback. And finally, section 4-2.4.3, rear yard. Once again, we're seeking relief from the current regulations and ask to conform with pre-1999 regulation, a 25-foot setback as opposed to a 35. It is quite evident that what we ask is simply just to fit in. We believe that the current regulations will force this development to be inconsistent with the existing character of the neighborhood and, quite frankly, render this site unbuildable. It is in my professional opinion that this development will not have a negative effect on vehicular traffic, will not negatively impact the existing, excuse me, quality of the environment, and I promise you, the overall building and site design will enhance and protect the character and property values of the adjacent neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I should clarify for members of the public that currently our inspector is not attending the meeting, and I apologize, because in this event, this will be where we'd be asking him for clarification on why these zoning codes, as you mentioned, were changed in 1999, the reason for those changes, and how your application conflicts with those. So I apologize, and they will be here hopefully next month where we can go over this further as we talked about in our work session over the two-month, the two-month approval process. Okay, is, now, would you like to add anything else as far as, aside from?
Well, I have some documentation here that just backs up some of the information I discussed.
All right, so just to clarify, currently, this is essentially the backyard of the property. It's, it is in the possession of the owners currently, these spaces.
That is correct, yes. So lot 6A is the lot that is, would be closer to Taraway and access from Taraway, and 6B would be the lot fronting White Plains Road. The current address is 242 White Plains Road, however, there's no driveway or access from 22.
Right. And currently, this property is flanked by two other properties that are both about, I think, believe you said the property on the right is about 25 feet from the road.
Yes, 240 White Plains Road is, has a 25-foot setback.
Right, and this is at, this is at essentially where Winter Hill comes down into the Village of Tuckahoe. There's a light near this property and across from Immaculate Conception, correct?
Yes, that's right. The, the two neighboring properties have, I stitched together.
That's helpful, thank you.
To show, to show the relationship. But also, on another plan, you can see, actually, the distance between 242 White Plains Road and the intersection is roughly about 200 feet. It's, I would also like to point out that Mr. Campana is a business owner in town. He's out of the house prior to 7:00, 7:00 a.m. He comes back around 4:00 p.m. Mrs. Campana works from home, seldom leaves the house, maybe once or twice a day. So traffic going in and out of this property, although, you know, the driveway, just like 240 White Plains Road, would be pretty tight, cars coming in and out of here probably about eight to 10 times a day maximum.
Right. I mean, one of the concerns is, which I'm sure you know, are well aware of, is the poor neighbors on the other side of this property have had to put up chains to essentially stop people from U-turning on their driveways to essentially turn around in the middle of 22. So it's a, you know, it's a rough area sometimes to, you know, I often.
Mostly at peak hours.
Right.
But considering it is a residential lot, you wouldn't be experiencing that much of an impact.
Right. Now, if I could ask you to turn to the next page of your presentation there. Now, this is where I wish Bill was around because I would probably ask him how the heck the one to the right got approved at some point, because that is literally.
It was built prior to 1999.
Shoehorned into that property, so.
It was, it was built prior to 1999 and therefore conforming to those regulations.
Right.
So the precedent is there.
Right, and one of the issues, and you know, obviously, we can't wait to have you back next month and work this out in a little more detail, is, the problem as a zoning board is that, you know, we are kind of serving at the behest of the mayor and the village board, who have determined that, you know, the zoning regulations as they are changed is, is what they're looking for, and that's where I'm hoping we can get some more background next month regarding why those changes took place. But thank you very much. Is there anything else you'd like to add before we ask for public?
I think, no, I think that's all.
Gentlemen, do you have any?
No, that's not.
The only thing is, what do you call, some of the, excuse me, the variances are pretty substantial, and it was never a thought to make this, instead of a one-story building, to reduce the footprint, make it a two-story building, so for you, to, so that, how should I say, be more favorable?
Well, the, the point of the development is primary residence for Mr. and Mrs. Campana, not necessarily for resale or for, you know, spec, you know, speculative build. In that case, if it was a speculative build, yes, we may consider going to maybe, you know, asking for a 15-foot side yard setback, but this is not the case. And quite frankly, both, again, 240, 244 White Plains Road, they're both nine feet off of the, off of the property.
And the bigger issue is the variance on the actual lot size, which is 77,900, correct?
7,900 and, 493.
Okay.
Yeah, which, again, is 51% larger or comparable to all of the lots within 400.
Now, to play devil's advocate, has there, has there ever been any thought about, rather than creating a separate property, creating a separate one-floor dwelling in the property itself? Because one of the issues of, big concern is the access to 22, which, you know, has there ever been any thought about that or extending, adding an extension, which is kind of an independent space to the property?
I don't think that is, that, that's not in the cards.
Okay.
As far as the development or, or in addition to the structure. Quite frankly, the house has outgrown them, and that's, that's the reason for this. They don't, don't want to maintain something that's bigger.
Right, and one floor is a nice thing to have, when you don't have to go up and downstairs all day, I know. I grew up in a ranch, those are nice. No, I just wondered if there's any thought as far as, rather than creating two separate salable properties, just having a separate extension or a separate property within the...
It, it has not.
Okay, thank you. All right, I think we're going to ask for comments from public. Appreciate your presentation. Thank you.
Chair, also, just so you know, White Plains Road is a state road, so any curb cuts or any changes to that road would need to be approved by the state.
Would, would that have any bearing on our approval or, or, you know, denial?
If, if this board is inclined to approve this, he would still have to go to the state for the curb cuts.
Before we give any approval?
Well, before the state would, yeah, allow.
I spoke to Mr. DiMarco about that, and he said, yes, we both need a local and a state approval for the curb cut.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. All right, I'd like to open the public hearing. If I could get a second?
Second.
If anyone from the public would like to come up and speak?
How you guys doing? Michael Beverly, I live at 240 White Plains Road. First of all, I want to, I want to thank the board for notifying us of the meeting. We found out today, so my wife and I were able to make it over here. So all this information was, was brand-new to us, but I'm very happy that we were notified about it, so appreciate it.
There was a sign on the property, I think, this whole week.
There was a sign, and we actually saw it earlier this week, and we, we looked at it, we tried to look it up online.
Oh, okay.
Were unable to find it, but then we got a letter in the mail.
Should have been certified mailing to you guys.
It was certified mail, but we weren't around to pick it up.
Oh, okay.
It was at the post office for a few days. Luckily, we picked it up today.
Well, I'm glad you're here, all right.
So I, I guess, first of all, you know, the Campanas have been amazing neighbors. We've, we've bought the house almost four years ago, and I've leaned on Matt for assistance, direction, instruction, for, you know, first-time homeowner and all that, all that stuff. I guess, before I, you know, provide my exact feedback or my initial thoughts coming in, I was unaware that you were attempting to build it for yourself. That was news to me. But I guess, if I could get a little bit more information perhaps from the architect on, on what the, the building structure.
Sorry, so you have to direct your, it's going to be this kind of weird third-party process where you have to kind of talk to us, then we'll talk to them.
I would, I would like to know more, more detail on, on the space. You know, one of the main reasons that we purchased the house we did was because of the yard around it, right? We have that open lot next to us, which has been the Campana's backyard. We have a, a large backyard, we have space in between us and the other side. That space was key for me specifically, and I, I am a little worried. That space was key for me specifically, and I am a little worried that the property value will go down if we have a house on top of us. And as noted, the size of the lot is not very big, so, you know, depending on how wide, and that's why I'd like a little bit more information on the exact specs of the build, you know, encroachment and, you know, the space itself, again, is not gigantic, so I'd just like a little more detail on how the house would be built. Additionally, there's a very large rock. There's a lot of bedrock in the neighborhood. Specifically, my house, for example, I have, you know, my basement is curved because of the bedrock. I'd like to know how they're planning to address that in the build of the house. I have two young kids, two young kids are on that side of the house, worried about their safety during the construction, the dust that comes up with it, but the main point is truly the property value and the space and how close it'll be to the adjacent lots.
Now, just for purpose of clarity, is it the right or the left property that you're in, facing?
I'm in two forty, so I'm the one on the right.
The brown house, I believe. It's a shingled brown residence, okay. All right, I think, I mean, we share some of your saying concerns, and, you know, they've been wonderful as far as talking to us in the work session. Work sessions are also open to the public. You're not allowed to comment during them, but you're allowed to observe at least if you want to attend our next work session. Again, one of the issues is our billing inspector, who could probably tell you a lot of this details about, if they had to do rock, et cetera, which would have to be at a later date with him, is not here today. But, you know, that would be where you could find the details as far as drilling, but none of that has been presented to us as a need at this point. I think right now, I'm assuming it's a preliminary proposal to kind of see where things stand before they go through the expensive process of a ground study and kind of going through the construction. But we hear you, and thank you for your input, that's wonderful.
My name is Tom Abilama, I live at six Crawford Drive, which is just around the corner from there, and there's going to be blasting, it's all rock. When they first put in Taraway, it was constant blasting. That's one objection to it. Its density in the area, there's very little open space between the houses that are in there now, and you're just cutting it down, and if you change the variances, it's going to be down to, I think, twenty-five feet, did you say?
Twenty-five feet.
Yeah, there's a house there that was put in, it's right on White Plains Road, it has no front lawn, the front lawn is White Plains Road.
Yep.
So it's, again, an objection to the density and the...
The setback from the White Plains Road. Yeah, I mean, it's a concern, it's twenty-five feet right now between properties.
Any of these sides and the backs, you're going to have, again, a plenty-looking lot.
Yep.
Which we have already in several houses in the area.
And again, Bill could confirm, I may be speaking out of turn, but I don't believe the village even allows blasting anymore.
That's what I was going to say, Mr. ...
It is only drilling, which is no more fun, drilling is no more fun than blasting.
When they put in Taraway, which was the back part of that lot, when Alfredo owned it.
Yep.
It was blasting, it wasn't just drilling. Drill holes are still there, and at one time, we thought there was still dynamite down. They had to clear them out, so.
All right, well, thank you, we take your concerns to heart. Thank you, sir, for your comments. We appreciate you sticking around. If there's anyone else from the public that would like to come up? All right. All right, thank you very much. We'll hold over the public hearing until the next meeting. Thank you all for very much for coming and talking to us and presenting your project.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Oh, I don't have the date, where are we? We're, is it the second Wednesday?
It'll be the second Wednesday of June.
Second Wednesday of the month. And you have to look on the agenda, there's a work session beforehand that the public, as the chair said, is welcome to come to, they just can't speak there, but there's a lot of work that goes on at the work session, so if you plan on coming to the meeting, show up a little bit early. The time for the work session will be on the agenda also, so.
All right, thank you. All right, so moving on to our last item of the evening, and thank you everyone who stuck around here, two eighty-three Marble Dale Road, enlarging a non-conforming use. Like to approach the mic, give your name and address as soon as you're comfortable. I'm going to sneak a peek at your plans here. I didn't understand.
Good evening, my name is Tom Abilama, architect for the applicant. Mr. and Mrs. Garaskio are here, present among us. This application is in regards to two eighty-three Marble Dale Road, which is an existing, pre-existing non-conforming two-family dwelling in a R S A five zone, which is a single-family district. The application is in regards to section five dash one point six point one and five dash one point six point two, which allude to the enlargement of any existing structure that is non-conforming. The structure of the house is such that, if you see the hatched area in the back, that's an open area on the basement level, but it's covered with the first-floor structure. And the wishes of the applicant is to provide indoor area under that footprint of the first floor. In addition, they like to finish the existing basement and use it for their rec room area, family area, and such things. The, also, there's, the applicant wishes to provide for an enclosure of a storage area underneath the porch, the cover, the enclosed porch on the first floor. At present, right now, there is a storage area which is built out of wood frame, they like to improve it and build it out of masonry walls, the same as the rest of the basement walls.
I'm sorry to interrupt you for just one second, sir. Just trying to understand, and to be honest, I found the planes a little confusing, probably it's my own fault, but, just trying to understand, there's currently, and we might ask to do a site visit, just to understand the property, we're getting a little confused. Right now, that gray area that you're showing on your drawing there is currently an enclosed timber frame, one-floor porch, is that correct? I'm trying to understand, what's there?
That hatched area is part of the first floor.
Right, so on the first floor, essentially, the building is in the white area, and then there's an enclosed porch, is that what's in the kind of gray area on the first floor?
Let me approach the...
I'm sorry to stop you in the midst here, I'm just, we're having trouble getting a hold of what's actually there right now.
This portion here is part of the first floor.
Okay.
Beneath that, it's an open area below, at the basement level.
Is it an enclosed, separated porch from the structure, or is it?
It's part of the first floor. This next door here, this hatched area, is the enclosed porch on the first floor, and...
Okay, so directly behind the house is already a kind of, within the structure area, to the left of the structure is an actual porch, okay.
And the reason we hatch this area is because the application's in regards to enlarging the basement.
Right, I think for next month's meeting, we might want a first floor as well, just so we can see what you're changing.
The relationship to the basement and everything, so we can understand.
Just so we can understand the separate structures here. Okay, so existing right now, under, you know, directly behind the house, forgetting about the porch off to the side, directly under the house, there's currently no basement in that back gray area.
Exactly.
It's essentially on posts.
On metal posts.
Okay, all right, so essentially, you'd be extending underneath the house, but then, so maybe, just to understand the treatment on the left-hand side, so with the enclosed porch, you'd essentially be rebuilding the structure that's there with concrete walls, and you would, that would be at the same level as the interior basement?
Exactly.
Okay.
Now, there's one exception, that outside the footprint of the existing house, there's a small deck off of the enclosed porch, that we'd like to enlarge it, and it's represented here in the drawing, and to have a stair accessed from it on the first floor to go down to the basement level or to the driveway. So that's the only area that's going beyond the footprint of the house. But regardless, none of the side yards or rear yards are affected as far as the, we're not asking for any variances in that regard. The only variance we're looking for is the enlargement of pre-existing non-conforming structure.
I will say, just for me personally, I'm not speaking for the, I would appreciate for the next meeting, if there's any chance, just a couple of quick iPhone photos of what the side porch currently looks like, just, you know, that way we can avoid having a site visit on you, but just...
I need like a visual.
Just a visual as far as how that side porch looks and how the back area looks from the ground level outside the house. But just to understand that we're essentially not going any further toward the yard on the left or the yard on the right.
Right, there's no yard, side yard or rear yard.
You're enlarging the back step-out area a small amount, but nothing fairly minor.
Right. The required rear yard setback is twenty-five feet, and we still have thirty foot nine inches left. And the side yard, we still have nine foot four to the edge of the bottom stair, while the required setback is nine feet.
Okay. All right, I think we might have a couple more questions for you, I think we'd love to hear from the applicants as far as their plans for the house and what the need is for the space here. This, just to clarify, this is currently a, essentially a two-family house in a one-bedroom zone, or one-family zone, yes, okay.
I'm going to introduce people.
That's wonderful, thank you.
Can I show you a picture?
Oh, yes, absolutely, sir. If you wouldn't mind introducing yourself on the mic first.
Robert, Robert, the homeowner.
Thank you. All right, yeah, we'd love to see it. Sorry, it's one of these things, I don't know why it's having trouble translating from the drawing.
This is, the kitchen is above these pillars.
Oh, okay.
Where's the...
So this area?
This is the enclosed porch.
Yep.
Underneath here is a space like that. All underneath this kitchen are these posts, this is the exterior wall of the kitchen, and all underneath this is vacant.
So this is all kitchen right now, currently?
That's the current first-floor kitchen, right down, and this is underneath it. See, that's the space he's talking about, under, this is directly under this porch.
Okay, and just for the public, we'll have these photos, if the applicant is okay with it, printed, and we'll have to present it to the public at the...
And that's, this is the space from the basement wall.
Okay.
That the kitchen overhangs.
Yep.
If you can see, that's the, that's basically the pictures.
All right, thank you very much, sir. Yeah, and if you're comfortable sending those to the billing department, or who should we send those to, Gary?
Send them to the billing department, they'll print them out, make them part of the file.
That's, no, and maybe...
Yeah, or if you could print those out and file them with the billing department, that might be easiest.
And maybe if you have a shot, just like if you're standing on your side yard, looking at that left side, and then from the back of the house, looking at the rear of your house, I think that would help.
As clarification, the footprint is based on the first floor and not the basement.
Okay. And the structure to the left of your home is currently just a closed-in porch, is that like a three-season, a three-season porch? All right, and would you mind telling us why you want to do the, kind of walking through why you want to do the expansion and give us the story behind?
Well, we just, you know, we just want to have more space, you know, sometimes I work from home, I'm a real estate agent, my husband just wants a, lack of a better word, a man cave, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't know what...
No, that's, you're fine.
No, no, you're fine.
A place to entertain, you know, our family and friends.
And it's right off the backyard, so you can access the yard.
Now, just to understand, the structure is a two-family, one-family on each side, is that correct? So there's a split essentially in the middle. Will the basement be split between the properties, or will the basement be entirely yours?
Well, at this time, yeah, it would be for our use. I mean, I don't know, down the road, we may decide to give half of it to the tenant, I don't, but right now, this is for us.
Okay, my only concerns on that might be asking Bill, when, our inspector, when he's back, just safety, you know, as far as getting between, because it looks like there's a solid wall between the two structures in the basement. I have some concern safety-wise about there being, you know, only essentially accessible from the, it looks like one door from the back between the two portions?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
So what if...
Sorry, if you mind getting the mic, sir. Thank you, guys, we don't mean, we don't need to subject you anymore.
They like to have the flexibility to either have the whole basement between, underneath the two units for themselves, in the future, in case they want to subdivide it also, to have it, you know, connected together. Now, we started the application with one door connecting between the two spaces, and maybe if there's a need for them to have another door, and through the solid masonry wall, that's the dividing wall between the two units, that's also another option that could be played in, maybe.
Yeah, I mean, it's, and we can ask Bill when he's back for the next meeting, it's a bit of a safety concern. I mean, I'll tell you off the cuff, for me, the going back, I don't think is any issue, you've already got a substantial space above. Again, I'd like to see more pictures of the side and stuff. The side porch, I think we're have to examine a little further and kind of understand what you guys want to do with that space, but that's probably where I'm going to be interested in seeing it, further plans from you.
For our next presentation, we're going to provide a whole sheet with pictures and images, so to have a comprehensive...
Okay, I mean, I think if you just send those to the billing department, we can, we'll have those ourselves as well. Does anyone have any?
Yeah, and I'm the same way, I need a visual of the back, what it really looks like, for, I could get a better picture of it. And you're doing the whole back, right, not just like half of it, you're doing the whole, the whole back of the building? The whole back of the house?
The back of the building that's covered.
Yeah, okay, all right.
And if I can ask, it looks like there's a full bath with the shower and almost a kitchen in the basement.
Both sides.
If I was, if I was suspicious man, it looks like an apartment, I have to tell you.
Yeah, there's never going to be, there's no intention to have any apartment at all. The only reason for that is to have a so-called man cave, you know, and the other area for entertainment, you know.
Understood. All right, well, thank you very much. No, I think this is great, and we look forward to some more clarification next month, and the work sessions are very helpful sometimes, so we can sit and...
I would suggest you come to the work session prior to the, what do you call, the meeting, okay? If you have questions, we could propose, you know, bring forth the questions to you at that time.
We weren't aware of this work session.
Okay, if you look on the agenda, okay, the agenda is always posted online and everything, it'll tell you the time of the work session and everything on that agenda.
Gary, aren't they notified of the work session as applicants?
They should be, I think.
Okay.
Everyone else made it.
Okay.
I think they were.
All right, thank you. Do you have any questions for us, or we're all set?
Fine, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, guys, we appreciate it. All right. And, yeah, sorry, so, yeah, you're all done, thank you. So we're going to move to open the public hearing, if I could get a second?
Second.
On fair?
Aye.
Do I need to do aye every time?
Yeah.
Yes, please come up. If any members of the public would like to speak, please.
Hi, my name is Jenny Steinhegen, I'm on Southside Street. I was here last week with a couple of questions about potential parking issues with one fifty Main Street. I really appreciate the time you took to hear out my questions and concerns. I know the public comment period is over. I heard that there are twenty spots for thirty-nine members in a class, kind of interesting, but I suppose we'll see, but I'm actually here with another question for you. It's a question that I brought to the building department, and I was discussing with the Tuckahoe Police Department recently, and they suggested you might be able to help. So you know where I live is very close to the car wash?
Oh, just to clarify, is this regarding two eighty-three Marble Dale Road? Okay, so let's, we'll close that, and then, are we allowed to have a adjourn?
Well, yeah, adjourn that, so make a motion to adjourn that.
That's all right, they were probably just very nervous for a second. All right, we're going to hold over the public hearing on two eighty-three Marble Dale Road until the next session.
And then, Mr. Chair, it's in your discretion of...
Okay, yeah, we'll go ahead and have a open public forum here, if you'd like to come up and approach the...
Yeah, come on up.
Do I need to do anything formal, Gary, an A, a second?
No.
Okay, no, please. And one thing I just would like to clarify is that, and the applicant is not here, so this is all, you know, fairly informal, is that twenty-six is actually the size of his classes, the thirty-nine are, and we've double-checked this, it's very specific times that there's only usually one or two classes on the weekend, that's it pretty much. So essentially, there's, we had a parking study done by the village's kind of expert on the parking, and they came up with almost forty-metered spots immediately surrounding, and don't forget, right there on the road, right between the two buildings, what is it?[1792.01]
Midland.
Thank you. Right there on Midland, there's like a ton of brand-new spots that are empty every day. They're gonna have their 10, 10 devoted spots, and again, based on the study we asked them to do, they already had all their spots, and they kind of went, you know, we still asked them to go get a few for their employees, and we really appreciated they actually went and did that of their own free will, so...
Mr. Chair, I don't know if you were watching before, Donnie said the first part of the meeting was cut off, where the applicant explained that he had three extra spots from the developer for the employees, so there are three extra spots, you may have missed that if you were watching.
I did, I did.
So, so one thing is that, that's actually more of a concern to us than the people who work out at the gym, because when they're there, they're only there for, what, 45 minutes to an hour, they're usually okay to use the meters. If you have an employee, those are the people that are gonna park on your street, so the fact that he went and got three spots just for his employees, and they're actually not on the street, they're not in his spot, they're actually in the building, so he's, they're off the streets, and so I, we really appreciated that.
No, I'm thankful.
So, we're hoping that takes, we, we were just as concerned as you, so, we have to drive the same street. Now, you want to have a general comment regarding an issue?
It was a question, really, because I wasn't sure where to go with this. So the car wash on Marbledale Road, which is Marbledale and Main Street essentially, is very close to where my property is, and the blowers from the car wash are really loud, and I, I was wondering how loud they are. We went out and bought a decibel meter and had to consult, I think it's 15-39 of the zoning code, to see where the limits were for what I believe is a general business zone. And we found that it varies between 50 and 65 decibels. According to the meter that we bought, it spikes up into the 90s, considering the ambient air, but, uh, but not ambient air, ambient noise. So we called the Tuckahoe Police Department, and they came out with their meter, because we wanted to get an official reading, and this was on a Saturday morning around 10:00 AM, and they clocked it in at 65, which falls within a general business zone limit, 65 is the highest, right? And that was on a Saturday between 9:00 AM and 5:00 PM. Here's my issue, 65 is really loud, but I guess that's the limit for the, the zone, but it's 65 or higher throughout the day, and that 65 ends on Saturdays at 5:00 PM, and it's supposed to drop down to 50 through Saturday night, Sunday day, until 7:00 AM on Monday morning. And then it's, again, 65 decibels until 7:00 PM. This car wash is open from 7:00 AM until 11:00 PM on a good day. On some days, they take people in early and let them go later, and I do sometimes involve the police when it is really loud at 11:30 at night. But I guess my question is, where do we go from here? Because...
I could adjust that. This is the zoning board of appeals, this, that issues, the issues that you're talking about, don't go before this board. So I think you may have misunderstood the police department, they may have asked you to come to the village board, because what happens is, is two, there's two issues that you're discussing. If the, if the noise is over the noise ordinance, that would be a police issue or a building department issue, both can issue violations for the, for violating the noise issue, okay? The noise ordinance.
Okay.
Now, however, if you feel that the noise ordinance is too high, then you'd go to the village board and ask the village board to consider changing the law to lower the noise ordinance.
Start with them, not zoning.
Yeah. Yeah, zoning has nothing to do with it.
We're more if they wanted to build a new structure.
Right.
Like a general issues with how they're doing their business would be, and I'm sorry you had to sit here for the whole meeting to discover that.
No, it's, it's really interesting.
So, again, to reiterate, if they are in violation of the noise ordinance, the building department is probably where to go. They have their own noise meter, though, they know exactly where to measure from, and they can issue a violation if they're over the noise ordinance. Again, if you feel that the ord, noise ordinance is too high to begin with, that, that's the law, that's the village board's in control of that.
And you, just, you live across from Ecap, right? Like, the street up from Ecap?
Exactly.
You can hear it all the way over there?